Thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner Brown. Roll call.
Commissioner Andrade?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Quigley?
Here.
Chair Dickerson?
Here. Okay, moving on to the approval of the Plan Commission minutes of May 20th. I assume everyone has had a chance to take a look at them or read them. Are there any comments about them, or can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve the minutes as written of May 20, 2015.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Motion carries. Public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited in discussion of three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. These are for items not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to make any comments about things not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of commission members. Should anyone, including members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. We have two agenda items. Does staff have a comment about either of them?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The second item at 504 South Western Avenue has a comment card, and the applicant has agreed to continue the item for one month to allow the neighboring property owner and the applicant to be able to communicate and work out any issues that they might have.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and pull that and continue it?
And continue it.
Okay. So we are down to the single item. Do any of the commission members wish to pull that item or have any comments about them? Seeing none, do we have a motion for consent?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent calendar, item one only.
Okay. All seconds. Okay, we have a move and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number three.
I think we need to move, deal with item number two of the consent calendar.
Well, it was pulled and tabled.
We have to do something with it. Once you pull it from the consent.
Yeah, I mean, to be thorough, we could make a motion on continuing it.
Do I have a motion to continue item number two?
Is there a date?
It's one month, August 19th.
August 19th?
I move that we continue item number two to August 19th.
Can I just have a question? So is this discussion on that item open? Or is it just before we even open the item?
Just before we even open the item.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And then we move on to number three. Conditional use permit for Jordan's self-service car wash at 309 East Chapel Street. Can we hear from staff on this?
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Stated, the project before you is a planning commission, the planning commission making recommendation, it's a resolution making a recommendation to the city council for a use permit, conditional use permit for the East Chapel car wash. The project would allow demolition and reconstruction of a four-bay self-service car wash on a 0.7 acre site at 309 East Chapel Street. The subject property is located in the Bungalow District of the Downtown Specific Plan. Surrounding land uses include office buildings on either side to the east and to the west, across East Chapel Street to the south are office buildings and multifamily residences. To the rear of the project site on the north are office buildings, a small church, and an apartment building. The existing car wash is roughly 50 years old. The new car wash would replicate the size of the existing car wash. The applicants have expressed that the new car wash will improve their ability to manage and maintain the car wash. Additionally, the proposal would replicate, replace the outmoded corrugated metal structure with a more visually stylistic structure. Based on that background, staff has evaluated this conditional use permit for the applicable municipal code standards and the standards set forth by the Downtown Specific Plan. As a guiding principle, the Downtown Specific Plan encourages a more walkable and pedestrian-friendly downtown. In support of that vision, the specific plan generally encourages the transition away from automobile supportive uses and toward more pedestrian-oriented residential and commercial uses that typically place buildings, storefront, and landscaping along the downtown public streets and sidewalks instead of the expanses of paving typically associated with automobile-related uses. Another tenet of the Downtown Specific Plan is to enhance the visual appearance of properties located in the city's downtown. In this case, a major improvement would be the building. The corrugated metal structure will be replaced by a more stylistic structure. The new car wash will incorporate a California Mission style, including architectural features, painted cement plaster exterior, a sloping roof element with blended color clay barrel tile roof, stylistically decorative in-roof parapets. As equally important is the landscape treatment. For commercial uses, the municipal code establishes a minimum of 15 percent landscape coverage. However, according to the site plan, the current landscape coverage on the property is only 3 percent. The existing landscaping on the site consists of two narrow planting strips on the east side and on the west side of the property. However, typically, when major investment is made to demolish or replace a building, the expectation from the city is that the entire property is improved. Therefore, with this project, staff has advocated that the major improvements to landscaping should occur. Staff believes the best opportunity for the enhanced landscaping would be to take the frontage of the property along the street between the two driveways and remove the paving that's existing and replace that with landscaping. The landscape area can generally have a depth of 10 feet from the sidewalk in order to include the existing light pole. Moreover, the frontage landscape improvements would be more consistent with the general landscape treatments that characterize the neighborhood. However, in this case, the applicant has expressed opposition to extending landscape area at the front center portion of the property due to cost concerns and concerns that users of the facility will damage the landscaping. It should be noted that the municipal code requires vertical curves should be placed between driveways, parking lots, and landscaping. The purpose of the vertical curves is to keep cars from driving over the landscaped area and damaging the plant materials. However, in any case, staff believes that more landscaping is necessary on the site. The recommended tree planting, particularly along the street-facing side of the property, will result in improvements for the entire area. At first, the applicant had expressed opposition to expanding the landscaped areas and installing curves due to cost. However, very recently, the applicant has made a counterproposal. And staff has presented, that was a recent change, and staff has presented that proposal in the little packets up there. So there was, the typical, as shown on the cover sheet, is the typical landscaping that would be installed with the project. And then the second sheet, the staff's, is the applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant's counterproposal. Based on that sheet or that exhibit, the applicant is proposing now to widen the two landscape strips on the side, add four trees in those two strips, and place concrete curbing along the sides of the two landscape strips. This scenario with the widened landscaping, the curves, and the four additional tree plantings would increase the landscape coverage from 3 percent to probably 7 or 8 percent, roughly. But it would not include any trees along that center frontage area. Staff believes this compromise could be an acceptable alternative. Therefore, in summary, the project would again redevelop and extend the life of a car wash use in the downtown Santa Maria. A primary vision of the Downtown Specific Plan is to create an attractive pedestrian-oriented environment in the city's downtown core. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution, recommending that the city council approves the development and the car wash use as condition to require landscape upgrades, as shown in one of the landscape alternatives provided. Staff finds that the applicant's alternative is a satisfactory compromise. This concludes staff's presentation. And staff is available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Do any commissioners have any questions before we move on to the applicant?
No. Why not?
No?
No.
Is the, I have one question. The Exhibit B of the landscaping, does that show a 15 percent landscaping, or is that less than 15 percent?
Chairman Dickerson, that exhibit is still a bit less than 50 percent. It's roughly, probably about 8 percent, something to that effect.
Okay. Are there any other questions? No? If we can hear from the applicant, please?
My name is Tom Martinez. I'm the architect on the project, 2624 Air Park Drive, representing the Jordans. The Jordans are also present. Should staff or planning commission have any questions for them? The impetus for this work was the age of the building. The Jordans had wanted to do some maintenance on it, but because of the age of it, the curvature of the prefabricated metal building skin, it's all but impossible to find any type of material to renovate that facility. So as we undertook that remodel project, it just kept snowballing into, we need to knock that thing down. And so the costs have just gone way beyond, let's call it a maintenance project that the Jordans had initially anticipated. So one of the things that we've tried to do is, while we can do that with the building because we need to physically take the structure down, we're trying to work around the core mechanical and electrical system so we don't have to touch any of that, just provide a little bit more space in it. With that, we've agreed to the landscaping because there is currently irrigation on the two side strips, and we can widen it as far as we could conceivably to align with the drive approaches so that cars can access the drive. There is no access to the alley, so they basically have to make sure that we have the width to get cars in and out through those two narrow drives. So it really limits us to where we can put landscaping. The landscaping in the middle, at the heart of it, that staff initially had recommended, there is no irrigation to that. That would mean that we would need to saw cut through the, right across the drive up to the front to get that irrigation. And all of a sudden, we're going to have to then start considering to have to patch and replace a whole lot of asphalt. So that's why we've been trying to steer away from that additional expense. There are currently two street trees in the parkway out in front, so putting additional trees immediately behind that really would become redundant. You're not, you wouldn't really see them from the street.
All right, thank you very much. Questions from the commissioners?
No questions.
Commissioner Andrade?
Mr. Martinez, where is, where are the street trees now on Exhibit D?
I didn't get one that was labeled D. We're talking about the...
The second one?
You're talking about this one, Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. If you look at the screen, where the two trees that are being identified as proposed right smack in the middle, they are immediately south of that, yeah, right there where he's marking the circles, those are the two existing street trees. And they would only be separated by the sidewalk. So they really don't enhance the appearance from the street.
That was on.
Further questions?
The two trees circled in red there, are they reasonably nice trees, or they just, they look like they got to be come out?
The existing street trees?
Right, existing street trees.
The one on the left, or most westerly, is in very good shape. The second one looks like it has been struggling, but there is a lot of young, fresh greenery on it as though it is coming back to life.
I assume it's aesthetically reasonably pleasing then.
If you could put some fertilizer on that second tree and make it look like the first one, yes, absolutely.
Maybe staff can comment on that.
Yeah. Chairman Dickerson and Commissioner Quigley, the staff would just like to kind of follow up and reiterate. Yeah, the two street trees are in reasonably good condition. As Mr. Martinez indicated, the one on the left side is in very good condition. It looks good right now. The one on the right is in a little bit lesser condition, but I think watering and care could help it along. And it's a different kind of tree, so it looks good at a different time of year. When it blooms, it looks real good, and I think that's in a different season. So both are reasonably good, I'd say, yes.
And the height is roughly the same as you would have been suggesting for their landscaping?
The size and height is roughly the same, agree. We thought it would make a nice canopy if the, you know, the trees met on both sides of the sidewalk, which again is one of the tenets of downtown, is you kind of form canopies along walkways. But those two trees are in pretty good condition, we believe.
Further questions?
I have a question about traffic. I see the arrows pointing. Does that mean that it'll only be in one direction, being that it is downtown? How will the traffic flow?
Well, what they typically do, the vacuums are right up in front, so when you're coming through either of the two drives, the alignment is everybody's pointing north. They go through the car wash and basically park nose to the alley at the far top or north of the site. Upon drying their vehicles, they then have to back out and exit through the far west lane that is between the property line and the building. That's the only access out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
So they don't get to go all the way through?
No. That was blocked, I don't even know if it was even open when the Jordans initially purchased it. It's been blocked for many, many years.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. Let's see, that was questions from commissioners. So written communications, we do have one from Dave Cross. Dave, what do you have to say?
Well, thank you, Chairman Dickerson and members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Dave Cross from the Chamber of Commerce. And anything we can do to enhance the downtown, we support. And I'm here in support of this project because I think it would be 100 percent improvement on that property. It'll look terrific. I want to commend Community Development for working with the Jordans as well as Public Works. I know the Jordans had some issues on this, but it all seems to have been worked out. One thing in regard to the landscaping, and I don't believe it's been brought up yet, I support, I support their version of it for a good reason. If you looked at one of the pictures prior to that, where Community Development's recommending to put trees, you'll see the post, it's already tilted, where it's obviously been hit by cars or trucks. And from talking with the Jordans before, it seems that that area is a prime location where if you did have trees there, more than likely, they would be damaged one way or another. So I hope you consider that. Other than that, I think it's a terrific project, and we're in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant have anything else to say? No? All right. Then we will bring it back, and the public hearing will be closed, and it will be brought back to the commission. Are there any comments or questions the commission has, or any discussion?
I think this is a great idea. It's been there for a long time, and it does need a little bit to perk it up some. I think this will help a lot.
Anything else on this side?
No.
I just want to make a quick comment. I actually would have kind of railed on and talked about the landscaping, but Mr. Martinez brought up an excellent point, which is that these trees, being in back of another set of trees, basically, it becomes redundant. It isn't necessary. If those two city trees had not been there, I probably would have asked for those trees to be installed because we do want to try to beautify, you know, that area of our city. But as it is, we've got city trees there, they're growing, they're doing their thing. So I'm supportive of the applicant's amended proposal, Exhibit D as well. Okay. Do we have, does the commission want to make a, make a motion or a resolution here? Recommendation?
It's a resolution 2663.
2663.
Okay.
All right, I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and move that we, by way of resolution, recommend that the city council approve U 2015 0011, the conditional use permit for the Chapel Street car wash.
Second.
Would that be with applicant's proposed Exhibit D amendment to the...
Yes, I think that's what the staff recommended, as I understood it. Is that correct? Yeah.
And we had a second?
Yes.
All right. We have a roll call.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Quigley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye. This motion carries. Good luck. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, Santa Maria Police Department Communications Tower at 1111 West Bedaravia Road. A staff presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this is a plan development permit application by the city of Santa Maria to install a communications tower at the new police department on Bedaravia Road. Presenting this item tonight is the Information Technology Manager, and she will go through the, what the tower is part of, a system that it is part of. And then at the conclusion, if you have any questions about the actual permit, I'm available to answer them.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, and all the commissioners this evening. My name is Terri Ma. I'm the Information Technology Manager for the city. And I have the distinct honor of presenting to you this evening an overview of the radio system because you're just really looking at a specific component of it, which is going to reside at the Bedaravia facility, our new police department facility, a tower, 100-foot tower there. But it actually, that is just one small portion of the big system. There we go. So in my presentation this evening, I'm going to give you an overview of what is interoperability and why public safety needs interoperability, how the city of Santa Maria achieved interoperability, how we're going to expand the system regionally, and then how this will benefit the community as a whole. And I only have 13 slides tonight. I won't keep you here very long, and I have a lot of pictures, okay? So we'll get through this rather quickly. What is interoperability? The ability of public safety agencies to talk to one another via radio communication systems, to exchange voice and/or data with one another in demand in real time when needed. So why does public safety need it? Well, five years before 911 happened, this statement was released in a final report by the Public Safety Wireless Advisory Committee. Unless immediate measures are taken to alleviate spectrum shortfall and promote interoperability, public safety will not be able to adequately discharge their obligation to protect life and property in a safe, efficient, and cost-effective manner. And all of us can probably remember where we were on the day of 911 because radio communications failed, and we all got to see it worldwide on what happened. Well, we're not going to have that occur here in the city of Santa Maria and in this region. Currently, our radio system is like this. On the upper left-hand corner, we have the police department system, fire department system, our school districts, our emergency management system folks, our AMR folks, each one of them, their own separate disparate system. So how do they communicate when they need to talk to each other? They use mutual aid channels, or we loan them radios. Okay? But when we have interoperability from a system-wide perspective, everybody that's in that system can talk freely. So fire can talk with police, can talk with AMR, can talk with the school districts. We have unity in our radio communications. So building this foundation for citywide interoperability, the city chose and opted to obtain what's called a 700 megahertz Project 25 trunk simulcast radio system. 700 megahertz is a spectrum set aside specifically for public safety, okay? And while we're designing, and it was designed for the city of Santa Maria, it actually can have regional ramifications going beyond the boundaries of the city of Santa Maria, reaching across the counties, and you'll see later on ultimately helping to achieve statewide interoperability. Our system, from a regional perspective, is known as the Central Regional Interoperability Communication System, Central RICS. Our city manager and the public safety chiefs, these were their visions. They wanted to have complete coordination when they were responding to emergencies, be able to share information, not waste time because minutes really count, handle emergencies effectively, share communications, the infrastructure, resources, and costs, and address this interoperability from a local and regional level. Now, we obtained from Motorola Solutions a M3 core engine. That's the brains or the core of our radio system. This radio system that we brought into the city is a radio system that runs the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department and even does state radio communications, communications like the state of Michigan. So we have a very large brain, a very large capable system. This is a little pictorial diagram. On the upper right-hand side where you see the PD dispatch, that's the tower that you folks are talking about this evening. But there's actually another tower that the city will be putting up in the Los Flores property, where the future landfill will be. That is a 160-foot tower that went to council. It didn't come before you folks. But we wanted you to be aware that this one that you're looking at this evening is part of a system of two for the whole area. And the system incorporates the dispatch consoles that are at our 911 center, the dispatch consoles that are at our transit center, and also the voice recording system. So then, you probably see on TV when they play back what people are saying to 911, that's that recording system. And all these elements tie together with the core. These just happen to be some of the fun features that our police chief and our fire chief really, really like, the fact that there will be GPS on their radios. They can actually text message, so if they can't necessarily hear when dispatch is dispatching them out, now we have the capability to actually send a text message to the radio. That's new. And the fact that we can do over-the-air programming, a lot of times, they have to bring the engines to the radio technician, and we have to coordinate and schedule, it can be a three-day affair when we're trying to do the whole fire department. Now, we'll be able to just broadcast it, just like your cell phones, when you see that there's an iOS update, or there's an update to happen, and you just say, "Okay." That's kind of what will happen with the radios. Lots of efficiencies and time savings with this system. And many other things that can happen with this new system, okay, which don't exist today, but that help us to achieve the safety in the community. Okay? I chose to put this particular map up because today, what this is showing in green is these radios here, these are the new radios that'll be released out to the police department, okay? And Motorola, who is our partner and who is the manufacturer of the system that we purchased, we asked them to do a coverage map for us to show if our officers and our firefighters have this on the hip. We wanted them to achieve 95 percent coverage in our area. And you can see, there's a green dot up there, and that's our PD department. And in the lower bottom right-hand corner, there, can you get that? That's great. And there, there's Los Flores. Those two sites there help us to achieve complete coverage in the city and beyond the city boundaries. But today, with our analog system that we have, we actually have problems going to Marion Regional Hospital. They walk through that door, we don't always have coverage. They walk through that door, we don't always have coverage, and our officers, our firefighters can't talk to dispatch. Same thing with the mall. We have that kind of coverage problem where they walk into the mall, they can't talk. But with this new radio system, that's why we're wanting to put it up, we'll obtain complete coverage, just like you're seeing. So that's just regionally in our area for this city. What happened, Peter? There we go. But even going beyond, our SMAT buses, our SMAT buses in that lower map, you see the blue circle, that's the City of Santa Maria. Our SMAT buses travel up to San Luis Obispo and they go down towards Santa Barbara. Well, when they leave that green area that you just saw on that map, how they'll connect back in and be able to keep in contact with their dispatch center over at the SMAT bus yard is through smart devices. So your smartphone will have, can have an application on it that turns it into a radio. So now our buses can keep in radio communication back here to dispatch. So now we're expanding beyond just the footprint of the city and really starting to expand out into the region around us. And their smartphones connect through Verizon or AT&amp;T or Sprint, but we're using that broadband capability to tie back into the city's radio system. So it's an expansion of our system like we've never had before. This map shows our vision along 101 corridor. So when we begin to leave the City of Santa Maria, and you can see there's a green dot about two-thirds of the way down right there, that's the PD Bedaravia Tower, and then a little bit lower towards the right, that's the Los Flores. All those other red triangles are other repeater sites or other towers that if we join and establish a partnership with, let's say, the County of Santa Barbara, County of Slow, the cities up and down the 101 corridor, we can retrieve all that green shows that we would be able to have and maintain if our officers, when they have to travel down towards the sheriff's office down to Santa Barbara, or if they need to go up north, any of our people, they can maintain radio communications with our dispatch center, okay? And there are 21 radio sites that could help us achieve that in partnering. Okay, whoops, let me go back one. I mentioned earlier about achieving statewide interoperability. We're right in the center of the state of California. With our radio system, and as we build out, because we can see our city partnering with other cities in the Five Cities area, going down to Santa Barbara, we see ourselves even achieving partnerships with, hopefully achieving with Santa Barbara County, San Luis Obispo County, even going out north, east towards Kern County. And as we do this, we start getting towards the boundaries of where Los Angeles has their regional system, and the Bay Area has their regional system. And if we connect with them, now we're helping the state to achieve interoperability, which means CHP, forestry, our folks, everybody's talking, and we don't have any issues with them being able to talk when they're having and handling a major incident. So that's the big, 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 big vision, okay? And this is ultimately what we're wanting to achieve, is all these benefits. It's about protecting the citizens' lives, protecting emergency responder lives, increasing emergency responder effectiveness and coordination, improving response times, especially when it's multi-jurisdictional responses, and reducing property loss. And that's what this whole radio system endeavor is about. It's about the community, safety, and lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very informative. Are there any questions from the commissioners about this system or the tower?
Is there a downside to all this? It doesn't seem like there is, but...
Cancer from the radio waves. No, it doesn't appear to be. It's all upside. Okay, there is no written communications from the public. We heard from the applicant. Is there anything else from staff regarding referring this? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the commission.
I just have a question. Is this going to have any impact on any of the planes that are flying, coming from the airport?
As part of the review, the, we have had to communicate with the airport and make sure that it's cleared, and it has received all those approvals.
They have?
From the airport.
Okay, so it's not any flight path or anything like, okay, or future flight path?
No.
Okay.
That's a good question. And actually, I had one question. So there are no dead zones inside buildings or anything like that? You walk into any building and unlike our regular cell phones that sometimes...
Right. That was what we wanted, and we actually wrote that into the contract, that Motorola, in implementing the system, had to achieve thresholds of coverage inside the buildings. And we identified 10 buildings, like Marion, like the mall, Costco, the sheriff's substation off of Foster Road. There were, and we achieved, or created that list in talking to the chiefs. We said, "Where are your 10 hotspots from an inside-building perspective?" And they gave us their 10 hot ones. And then the contract, like I said, was signed with Motorola to achieve that. And I wanted to address your question about the airport. We actually had to apply to the FAA and the FCC for what we're doing with our towers and with our spectrum. We've received green lights from both of them. So they are aware of what we're doing in the city, and they've cleared us.
One last question about the coverage and just an issue of curiosity or anything else. Obviously, it covers all of Santa Maria and covers a lot of areas on either side. What is it about casamalia that there is this weird dead spot? It didn't show coverage for casamalia.
It's because of the terrain.
Okay.
All right. And so what we did is we chose to focus, because we can't achieve this just by the city itself. And maybe we should just go... So... Does that help?
Thank you.
So the system that we purchased and the money that the city has already invested is, like I said, for that green map of coverage. We have actually Pismo Beach, Grover Beach, Five Cities Fire, Bonita School District, Allen Hancock College, Guadalupe, City of Santa Barbara. Did I miss any? Those have all expressed interest in getting on this system immediately with us, okay? So what we do then is, we send, Carlos Delatorre is our radio consultant. So what Rick Hayden, our city manager, did is he's asked Carlos to go in and talk to each of those different agencies about their respective radio requirements. Then we find out what assets they can bring to the table. Do you have repeater sites? Then we turn to Motorola, our other partner, and we say, "Can you then take a look at these repeater sites and run a coverage of your area with that in mind, like I told you with the radios portable on the hip?" And then we obtain cost estimates from Motorola on what it would cost to begin extending our system towards that other agency, all right? And then they start describing for us where are their hotspots. We just asked Motorola to look at the 101 corridor just because we knew that our agencies go up and down that corridor, that's the main one. And we wanted to see if we were to try to achieve mostly green through that area of total coverage, it would take 21 radio sites. And we have County of Santa Barbara repeater sites, City of Santa Maria, and two that are owned by, one by Pismo Beach, one by Grover Beach, and then up by the City of Paso Robles and City of San Luis Obispo up on Tassaharan Cuesta. So we just did just kind of an outlook on what that would look like. We don't have any partnership arrangements in place, but we are definitely talking at the table as to how to achieve this and just growing beyond. We should have, tomorrow, actually, I meet with Bonita School District. They could be the first school district on board with us. And we want to actually do a partnership with the school districts because we want to do training with the school districts, with our police, with our fire, and establish SOPs, you know, standard operating procedures, and actually take them through the exercise of if they had something occur on their campus, how do they use a radio and talk to dispatch or talk to the officers or talk to the firefighters? And how is that coordinated effort handled? So we're really hopeful that the Bonita School District is going to sign on, and then we've got that third partner and already can begin that process. And then we've got, like I said, we should by next week be getting sales, offers for sale from Motorola, is to be able to talk to Grover Beach, Pismo Beach, and Five Cities Fire. So that's, and that's how we begin the build-out, is just explaining all of this to the different people. So we actually held the radio summit last November at Radisson, and we had over 80 agencies come from the three, from Ventura, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara Counties, just to hear about the system. And we'll host another one. This system, we hope to have up and operational by the end of the year, and we'll host another one after we're live so that they can actually see it in action, see what it is. Did that help you?
It did. Thank you very much. Are there any further questions? No? Mr. Andrade, one last one?
No.
No? All right. Then I bring it back. Yeah, that's what I thought.
No kidding.
Then I bring it back to the commission and close the public hearing process, and are there any comments or questions from the commission? Or if not, we have two motions that are needed, and take it from there. Do I hear a motion for the first?
I move that, do you want to do it?
No, no.
I move that we approve the Santa Maria Police Department Communications Tower at 111 West Bedaravia Road. It's number 2663, PD 2015-007.
We need to do the mitigated negative declaration first, number one.
Okay. So by motion, I move that approving mitigated negative declaration.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The motion carries. Motion number two?
I move that we approve PD 2015-0007, the Santa Maria Police Department Communications Tower at 1111 West Bedaravia Road, number 2663.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to number five, report on city council actions. Peter?
I don't have anything to report.
All right. Number six, oral reports from planning commissioners and staff. Any oral reports from planning commissioners and staff? If not, then I move to it. Yes, sir.
There is one.
There is one.
I apologize, but I just noticed, thank you, Mr. Bass, there's a typographical error in the resolution that's in the packet.
For item number four? Or number three?
Number four.
Four is a motion.
Correct, the resolution, I'm sorry, the resolution for the planning commission recommending the approval.
That was misplaced in item number four. It was a duplicate of what was in item number three. So the planning commission did make a motion or action on that resolution.
Okay, okay. So we should just remove it from our...
Yeah, that's what I was confused about its placement there. It was just by motion, so that's okay. My apologies.
So count that as an oral report, and each commissioner should, at his own desired timeframe, remove that from their pack. And other than that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.